All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, June 12th, I think it is. Laura, would you please call the role?
Benford. Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gabhart.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives.[71.59][71.59](laughter) Okay, and we're glad that you've, those of you who've come and those of you who are watching, welcome. And as always, we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Well, my report tonight will be brief and heartfelt. And in the last week or so, I've been saying goodbye to lots of folks in Boulder Valley. We had our final principal-manager-leader meeting, and they were delightful. They kind of did a, making a little bit of fun of me about being Mary Poppins, but other than that, they were very nice. And I just want to say how much I will miss all of you. But I see Amy Bounds back there, so I want her to know that I will be reading her articles about the board. So make sure she's nice and clear and concise. And I just have to say thank you. I will miss all of you. It's been a joy.
Okay, so, any questions from board members?[136.06][136.06](laughter) Kathy?
I just want to say thank you, Cindy. You've been a steady hand and a bright ship, and you've been amazing to work with, and we'll miss you a lot. And we really appreciate you stepping up and guiding us through the past year. It's been awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam?
Yeah, I would just echo that. A very difficult situation a little over a year ago. I called you out of the blue, and you just wanted to help. And, you know, I'm getting a little choked up because I'm really grateful that you stepped in and helped, helped the board, helped the staff, and ultimately helped the kids. So, thanks a lot. I'm forever grateful.
Well, I'm forever grateful that you called. It took me, what, five seconds to say, "Of course I'll come."
Yeah.
I was thrilled. So, I will always be grateful for that phone call. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Kitty?
Well, if I talk too much, I'll cough. But Cindy, thank you for being such a good first superintendent for me. You've made it very easy for the transition from not being on the board to being on the board. And we'll miss you.
I also want to thank you for welcoming me and for some nice lunches. It was a pleasure to step into the board with somebody so welcoming and giving me answers to questions. Thank you.
And I'll just echo what everyone said. I've said a couple of comments at some of the last meetings we've gone to together, the District Parent Council and to the District Accountability Committee. I am, like Sam, I get a little teared up when I say thank you to you. And a lot of things could have happened this year, and a lot of things could have not happened this year. And I'm amazed at how effective you were coming into this transitional, temporary situation, a situation where there's just a lot of emotions, a situation that needed a lot of guidance. And your energy and your spirit and just the, you know, the way you have these videos with music, and it was just awesome. And, you know, I think you did an amazing thing for this district and for our students, giving us leadership. So we got you a little something.
Yeah.
Oh, well, before you do that, let me say thank you. However, I give all the credit to the staff of Boulder Valley Schools. They're, they are amazing, both centrally and in our schools. And I do not take any of the credit. They were a remarkable group to work with. So I give the credit that we've made it to the staff. Oh, my.
Tina, let me say that I also want to thank Cindy very much. When we brought her on, because I know her from past experiences, there wasn't any doubt in my mind that she was going to do an excellent job in terms of taking over the hound, which she did. And I want to thank you, Cindy. And I know that our paths will cross again. And thank you for such a wonderful job you did for board of our school district.
Thank you, Richard. And now I'm opening this gift, and I'm so embarrassed.
Okay. Well, and this is really also thanks to staff. So Rhonda Penegras and Laura worked to put together this amazing compilation of children's artwork of animals. And there's also a suggestion for a plaque just to commemorate your service. So thank you so much.
Oh, this is wonderful. Oh, thank you.[361.12][361.12](applause)
All right, we'll move on to public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons who address the board to confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. That won't be the case this evening. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may now have warned or terminated participants' statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. Okay, so we have two speakers on non-agenda items, and we'll start with Jenny Nunnamacher. My apologies. Okay, great.
Tina, we have one speaker for four minutes.
Hi, my name is Jenny. I'm a parent in Netherlands. I have two kids at the middle, senior high school up there, and they have been going to Netherlands schools since they were little ones. I'm here to speak on behalf of a parent group that has convened to address significant concerns that exist in the Netherlands community regarding our schools, both elementary and the upper school. We've come together to advocate for a change. This group includes parents, community members, staff, and we'd like it to include district members as well. We'd like to advocate for change for the, because we think that the current course at the schools and the speed at which that course is changing needs to be, the speed with the changes that are happening in our community appears to be accelerating. Specifically, those issues are centered around declining enrollment, which affects our October counts, which then affects funding, and it's this vicious cycle of losing staff and fewer and fewer resources to staff a fully functional program for our students. The parent and community group has been collected. We've established a charter, which we'd be happy to share, that addresses these issues in more detail and what we would like to see happen as a result. The community was excited about the prospect of EL, so the Experiential Learning Program with the EL, is not the name of the program. And we appreciate the support that was available in the 17, 18 school year to provide professional development funding along EL guidelines, even though we were not able to enter into agreement with the EL program last year. And we'd like to see, but we didn't see really a lot of support from the district to, other than that funding. And that was one of the key issues for not getting support from EL. And so we would like to provide our resources as a community to really make this change. We invite you to participate in this effort. And we'd like to make sure that our efforts are aligned with the district, with the new superintendent, the staff, and the board of education. And so we'd like to request that the board of education and superintendent engage more directly and provide really explicit sponsorship of these efforts. So our first meeting, our first step, is a meeting with the Colorado and National Leadership of EL, and we are trying to get that going within the next week or so. And we would like the board of education and superintendent and any staff that are available to participate with us as well. So those are my comments. I don't know if Mike, you have anything to add? Anyway, so we'd like to continue that support, and please look for an invitation to participate in this in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all we have for public participation. So we'll move on to our first information item. We have here a legislative update. Did anyone have anything to say about the close of the legislative session, or we all set? Anyone? Kathy?
The only thing I'd say is we're still waiting. And I confirmed this today. There's a Gallagher interim committee, but they still haven't picked who would even participate in it or put the dates forward. And they only have one tentative date for the interim school finance committee meeting, so they're still trying to figure that out. So it's been pretty quiet. And if we get additional dates on, and there's also the task force, Sam, on start times, which I've heard nothing about, but if I get any information on any of that, I'll be happy to forward it to the board while we're on break, if anyone wants to go to any of those interim committees.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and Staff Update. Thank you all for coming.
Did you skip board communication?
Oh, I did. Wait, does anyone have board communication?
I'm good.
Is everyone good?
I'd like to say one thing.
Okay, Kathy, why don't you say one thing? Hold on.
I just want to say thank you, because we went to the Innovation Showcase out at Meadowlark, and Amy Bounds covered that. And it was awesome to see what the schools have each done and the different ways they presented it. Kitty was there, and Richard was there, and Cindy. And so I just want to say thank you for including us in that, because it was great to see the enthusiasm and the work that's been going on. And I look forward to seeing what the new work is as we go forward. And I also want to say thank you to Andrew for showing us around and giving us the IT tour. And I just had to laugh because we got to see the big Palo Alto filter, and somebody has a sense of humor and put a coffee filter on top of it. And Kitty had been laughing about what does the filter actually look like, and then there it was with the coffee filter on top. So I thought that was a nice touch. So thank you for both of those, for setting both those things up. I want to make it quick, but say thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Mike McLaughlin. I am the chairman of the CBOC committee. We have a new co-chair as well, John Stanton, who's here with me today. And we're going to update you on the progress of CBOC. The committee has met twice since the last report to you all in March. At the April meeting, we took action to approve the use of $1.18 million in program reserve funds to augment the fireside elementary project budget. We had received, the district received, three bids for the project, all of which were over budget. Several factors contributed to the cost of the bid and a change, including the change in project manager, which pushed the bid date. The current conditions of the construction market, including lack of labor, limited some contractors, and increasing materials prices. So the CBOC took that action to use reserve funds to meet that gap. Also, at the April meeting, we provided, and staff actually provided us updates on all the projects. We're going to hear from Kathy here in a little bit, including the status of the bids for the Netherlands schools. You heard a little bit from Jenny earlier today, as some of us community members are concerned about that, as well as the decision to include air conditioning in the project at Cole Elementary. In May, the committee welcomed several new members. Staff updated the group on current projects, as well as the status of the solar power purchase agreements. During the May meeting, the staff also gave a presentation on the lessons learned from the designs of the new schools gleaned from the collaborative observation visits among the schools with the architect in March. So Kathy, that goes a little bit to what you were talking a little bit about, the innovation projects. The purpose of the visit was for schools to support each other in a cohort in observing the use of space and transitioning instructional practice. BVSD has had a similar collaborative support process for the innovation work happening district-wide in the Innovation Showcase each spring. In the new schools, as well as the innovation projects, BVSD has seen the innovative learning environments can act as a catalyst to stimulate the instructional transition to a more student-centered learning. The CBOC committee was interested in the ability to use those learnings on a broader basis, not just the new construction and the innovation schools, but actually on a broader basis. So Tiffany helped us understand a little bit what was happening there and how that might happen. Around financial oversight, at each meeting, the committee reviews the financial reports, and staff presents a forecast of projected recommendations for the bond premium funds. As of May 9th, we have expended $313,586,043 million, and our contracted commitments total $407,2750. We are tracking project performance, the staff is, in terms of variance from the contracted construction bid, and they share this information with the committee. For the nine projects that are over 90% complete, the average variance from the contract price is 2.2% under budget. So that's really great performance, and that's a testament to the staff and Robin team. For the 10 projects that are 100% complete, the average variance is 1.7% under budget. That is my report for you this evening. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Director of Bond Planning, Kathy Sead.
Thank you very much for taking time out of this very busy schedule you have this evening to hear our update from the bond team. I'm very happy to give you a progress update on the Building for Student Success Program. If I can figure out how to make this There we go. Sorry. As Mike said, we have 20 projects that are completed out of 63 total. As of the middle of May, we have $313.5 million that have been, has been spent. And this makes us approximately 48% done out of the total bond program. We have 16 projects that are going into construction or design this summer. You can kind of see the list there. We have construction crews that mobilized on sites as soon as the students left the site on May 25th. And some of them actually mobilized a little bit earlier than that. We have movers that have cleared out all the classrooms to make room for the construction and the asbestos abatement that needs to happen at certain sites. The buildings will have construction fencing completely around them to protect the sites and keep, keep kids out of the playgrounds where they won't be safe this summer. The administrative staffs in a number of the schools are being relocated to other schools, and Andrew's team has helped with moving phones and their data connections so that they can continue to do their work until the end of their contracted time in mid-June or early July. Construction on the central kitchen out back here is slated to start in about August. We're working with the contractor and the architect on that now. We are working toward a fall start for the three Netherlands projects, which Mike mentioned. There's a slight delay from the original schedule because of the bidding climate that we were in. The projects came in significantly over budget, and so we're changing track just a little bit and getting that back on track. We're hoping to get much better subcontractor participation because by delaying it just a tad bit, so that the subcontractors are coming off their summer work and moving, looking for additional work to do next year. At Justice High School, the principal is looking into the possibility of obtaining a best grant, and staff will work with, with the principal to help frame that application for him. University Hill Project is on hold pending identification of additional funding for a cafeteria or classroom addition. Additional funding would either come from additional bond premium at the point that we sell bonds again, probably in March of next year, or it could come from savings or interest earnings at the end of the bond program. The remainder of the projects that are listed are currently in design or pre-design and will be under construction in 2019. The projects that are in pre-design are either awaiting architect selection or have architects on board that will be doing the due diligence on what I call the nuts and bolts part of their scope, the above-ceiling, behind-the-walls work this summer. And then the DATs, the design advisory teams, will start their work in August. Progress highlights include the BCSIS in the upper-left corner there, where the kindergarten addition, oh, no, I'm sorry. If I'd read my own slides, my apologies. There are projects that have been under construction through the year, and Broomfield High is one. The new field house is ready for use, along with numerous improvements that have been made to other athletic facilities on the exterior of the building. Centaurus High School, the library and student center renovations are in the final stages and will be ready for students in the fall. And at Eldorado K8, the new two-story classroom addition and kindergarten work is almost done. The, there we go. There's BCSIS. The new kindergarten addition at BCSIS High Peaks at the west end of the building is framed. Foundations are in. The roof is going on. And actually, since this picture was taken a couple weeks ago, the masonry is going up on the outside of the building, so there's good progress there. The transportation facility is moving along very well with foundations, the walls and roof, the beauty of precast concrete. It ships in and gets set and instant building. At Fairview High, the kitchen and cafeteria have been demolished, and they'll be converted into classrooms with a new kitchen and smaller cafeteria being renovated out of existing space there. We talked a little bit about the innovation. It was exciting that in April, we hosted members of Association for Learning Environment Southwest Region. The Southwest Regional Conference was held in Denver in April, and we had applied to do a presentation, and we were turned down on the presentation, and instead offered to have tours at three of our sites and do a presentation on one of the sites. So there were about 170 people who attended, and we had tours of Boulder High, Creekside, and Meadowlark. Other districts are bringing tours in as well to look at what we're doing with our innovation model, and they're, they're working on how they can include innovation funding in their own projects and, and bond work. So, in a nutshell, that's an update. Susan Cousins does a great job of keeping our bond website updated with lots of information. But if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them or take them at another time, because I know that it's a busy agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad to hear Netherlands is back on track. We heard the comments, and I know that was disappointing that there was that delay in terms of the bidding, and I'm glad that, you know, the seasonality could help with that. So, any other questions or comments, board members? Kathy?
I just want to say thanks to CBOC. I've been able to attend several of their meetings, and I know their giving of their time and the level of detail and the commitment and the attention that they give to each of these projects is commendable. And so I want to say thank you for your hard work and effort and, and steady hand in guiding us. It's really helpful to have the committee give us their recommendations and kind of keep us up to date. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. And also, should have said this during my comments, I'm a little out of order, but thank you to Netherlands for coming and inviting us to be part of this and for coming together as a community. And we'll look forward to seeing what happens in the fall with the building and how we can partner with you in going forward. So thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, great. We'll move on to our, thanks so much. We'll move on to our next item, which is a Common Assessment Implementation Update.
I'm very, very, very happy here to be providing you with what I hope is a brief update on where we are in the Common Assessment Implementation process. This, this, this work has been devised over many years with a lot of input, and it's really exciting to see it coming to fruition. One of the things we've learned in, in doing this work is to keep, keep really reminding people on why we're doing it. We are not giving assessments just for the sake of giving them, but rather with regard to very particular principles developed by the, by the Assessment Advisory Committee. The principles that you, that we'll talk about tonight most are really the first, third, and fourth. We've got a second one there that's very functional around actually screening and, and intervening and then monitoring particular progress. But the Common Assessments we'll talk about tonight really speak to our, our, our most important content. And, and the content we try to assess in ways that are, that are authentic and represent the kind of performances we think are very important to be talking about in terms of what we aim for with all kids, in terms of the first purpose, universal instruction, and what we want our educators to be talking about with regard to continuous improvement in that fourth purpose, and, and in that way, thinking about growth that they make over time. As we're, we're thinking about, about these, right, the, the assessments that were newly operational this past year are here shown in bold. And, and of course, algebra tests, there, and, and of course, math tests at grade two, and then grades two, three, and five, there, there's implementation of a writing rhetoric around informational writing. You can see here somewhat faintly the asbestos that are piloted and coming on, 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 coming on to all classrooms next year, and as well, we mentioned some other assessments that you've heard about in, in other contexts. In, in thinking about, about this, this work, rolling these assessments out, we really meant bringing them to about 8,000 students, right, at the, at three elementary grade levels, plus students taking algebra who are across middles and high schools, and teachers of these, of these students with, with, with an emphasis here on the kind of content that wouldn't only be done through a simple multiple-choice test. While one of these content areas, algebra requires multiple choice to cover the content appropriately. Our, our aim was to have students write and, and do math in ways that they would explain and reflect on the kinds of problems that we would hope for in terms of their understanding being more robust. In order to check on how well students are doing overall, we, we chose a random sample of these papers and then brought teachers in a couple of weeks ago to, to in fact score them after classes were over. This, this gives us a check on how students did overall, but importantly, at this stage in the process, gives us a chance to give teachers potentially some feedback on how well, how well their best, best efforts at the end of a very busy year match what we could do with trained scorers over the course of a, a couple, a couple of days. We had very enthusiastic participation from about 50 teachers, all of whom came back for this, for the, for day, day two. And we're, we're really excited to have this, this level of participation and the information that's going to mean going forward. We also did, did have teachers enter data online and then fed it back in ways that we hope can provoke conversations about instruction. Using FizzLab, we were able to give this back in ways that enable comparisons of how students in a class did with the, the whole district and comparisons across the content areas. Also recognizing this is at the, the beginning of the process, one of the things that will happen over the course of scoring is that teachers will identify ways that we should perhaps improve upon this. So all ready, one of the pieces, all, we can look at here. We would see a case where teachers had said, "Well, I think the way we proposed scoring this and had folks score this involved combining too many things, and really those should be scored individually." So we will make refinements and improvements over time and are intrigued to have had the process start. We, we've begun to tabulate data on how, how teachers scored compared to the trained, trained, the trained folks scoring. I would say we've learned that for writing, that more support is needed for folks to see examples of what grade level writing looks like. And there were some interesting findings as far as instruction, knowing that one, one component of teaching informational writing is teaching is teaching how to summarize what's been, what you read somewhere and how to not copy it, or if you copy a sentence, how you cite that. So, there have been some pieces that really are for first time through with elementary learning that way. I would say that our scoring was basically strongest at grade two, where we have a process that I think can yield some information about going forward, if scores look better than what we had this time around, will it reflect progress over time? Yes, and we will be giving, working to give teachers a chance to see what, how their scores compared to ones that were assigned by scores who received more training. I really appreciate all of our teachers' efforts, and hence our reminder about, we really are trying to assess important content, which means engaging them as folks who score. One of the ways we tried to recognize the work that went on this time around was to have a new half-day, was to have a half-day sub in cases where teachers were scoring something for the first time. This isn't that all the work could get done in half a way, but the part of it that's being new at something and trying to score to a particular standard, that's the part that we were trying to make up for. We also learned to increase our communication when requirements are new, to help make sure folks are aware this is possible. And we'll be, again, redoubling our efforts next year on assessments that have been piloted and making sure teachers know about this in advance as much as possible. And at the same time, adding support, needing to provide, in many cases, more examples of what grade level, above grade level, not quite at grade level performance looks like. We'll be addressing music and physical education next year, in addition to the other content areas noted on the list. And I'm very excited to be working with Terry Mulford, BVE president, on the district assessment team, which will have a chance to re-ground in what our expectations are, and will be able to hear concerns from teachers who feel unduly burdened by the assessment. I think it's a great conversation to have about what's the level of assessing and scoring that makes the most sense, and recognizing that with the commitment to significant content and deep performance comes some burden in getting those assessments scored. That's my report. I stand ready for any questions.
Thank you. Board member Stana?
Great presentation. I like hearing all of this, because I can relate to some degree. I used to help train up for the inner rate of reliability, and I know that a couple of the teachers and I, we communicated almost all year to make sure that when we scored something, that we matched how we would score a question. So, that brought me to, as you were explaining, how much training do the teachers get in? I mean, how long is it? Is it half-day, is it a couple of hours, and then they go off and score? I just wanted, for my own knowledge, to know what that looks like.
It varied a little bit by content, but in one, in algebra, where there was a half-day or two and a half hours after-school training, some of which was about how to give, where to access and that, but other parts were focused on how to score. There was help given too, as far as if somebody asked for a coach to come out and help get folks actually started. There was work done that way also. At the two-day workshop, it was more time than that, and with some, and beginning with teachers who had scored assessments anyhow. So, I would recognize that this is an over-time journey and a great conversation about what meeting expectations looks like.
Any other questions? Okay, and I just have a comment. I expressed this during the union negotiation with BVEA, but I do get concerned with a lot of sub-days we take for a variety of reasons. And I always worry about the ratio, you know, the instructional time that students are receiving. So that's one thing I, you know, just, I know that we're all thinking about that, and it's a concern that some parents have. So, thank you so much. Okay. Our next item is the literacy update.
So, I'm giving the very short data part of this presentation and then handing it over to Angel to talk about what we're doing next year and what we did this year. I want to basically start, though, with just the same kind of slides that I was able to show DAC back in April with some updates. These are, this is a way of looking at scores on the iReady that involve taking advantage of the kind of scale that it has, which is meant to track progress over grades for students. So, not only in the year, but over time. This affords some comparison with national data and gives us a chance to disaggregate and see patterns in terms of the gains made over time. So, one that look at these data involves looking at BVSD students' performance in a match group, represented here by the solid lines, compared to how students perform in the national sample. The comparison isn't quite perfect. This sample nationally isn't matched over all the four years, but it is representative of the kind of performance that we're seeing over time. And what we see typically here is that students in Boulder Valley make generally the same kind of gains that we're seeing made nationally. If we take out that very first observation on the left-hand side, which was the first time we gave iReady at whole scale, which for many folks was their first time taking a computerized assessment. So, as we look at these data, we end up seeing patterns that talk about the kind of progress that's made over time. When we break this down, taking second grade as an example, we can look at this in terms of the gains made by students BVSD-wide, which is represented by the blue line, mirrored tightly by the green one in the middle of this display, showing median performance with a band here that would show what we saw in terms of BVSD's standard deviation. That is, how far scores basically spread out. It's a measure of spread. What we see in the top purple line there is the performance by tag students. And the other lines pose what the performance is over time for students who qualify for special education, for students who are eligible for free and do lunch, for emerging bilingual students, and for Latino students. So, what we see is a pattern that tends to show the kind of gains that are being made over time, mirrored across the groups, which has the challenge, of course, that any differences that existed in grade two, right, are showing up here, in this case, in grade three, four, and five, also typically over time. This is a challenging pattern and one we're seeing across the grades generally. We can also look at these data, and this is the last slide that will require looking at it hard, I think, and no pictures of either students or words about important work that's being done in terms of teaching. But these are the data, look at these scale scores over time, not this time for a match group, but for all students. And what you see, and just an idea reading this, is the faintest solid line is the oldest Boulder Valley data. In addition to the darkest solid line, there's a dotted line. The darkest solid line and the dotted line are the last two years' worth of scores, showing the kind of gains that are being made over time. You'll see that these, that the pairs of lines there tend to be even with each other, suggesting that the kind of progress that's made over time is similar in Boulder Valley, and that in all instances, though not quite as much in first grade as in others, the kinds, the gains roughly parallel and are higher than the gains we see in a sample nationally, I should say. The gains parallel what's being made nationally, and the performance is higher. Looking at this hard, and this will be the last detail perhaps, you'll see that the dotted line, not the dash line, but the dotted line and the darkest purple line really are lower in most cases than the other lines that we're seeing of the same color. This represented a year in which there was a change to the test. So, you may look at some other supplemental data and see that performance isn't changed much from this year relative to the past year, but there is a difference that shows up between previous years. That is due in part, not completely, due to some changes in the test which show up in these particular scores. So, I'm certain I can come back later if you've not heard enough about data, but I would delightedly turn to the server, Angel.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some highlights of what's happening in our classrooms. And as you see, all of our teachers have been involved in using what we're terming the literacy instructional framework and also the layered continuum of support. This is, there's a little feedback. I'll keep going. So, all of our principals and teachers have been involved in professional learning sessions regarding our literacy instructional framework. And our teachers in all classrooms, K through five, are striving to implement it within their rooms. In this instructional framework, you can see that there are opportunities for whole group, small group, and one-to-one conferring with students throughout the literacy block. Teachers are also weaving in the five components of reading. During reading demonstrations and interactive reading, you can see there are opportunities for focused time on phonics and phonological awareness foundational skills and for skill instruction there, and also an opportunity for teachers to share and show how readers comprehend while they're reading texts. In this green section, we see that teachers are using this time for small group instruction, so they have that time for targeted learning opportunities while students are practicing their learning in authentic ways, examples being partner reading, being a part of book clubs, and responding to reading. Students also then have more opportunity to practice the foundational skills that are being targeted, and then an opportunity to share with their peers what they've been reading and learning. Along with the instructional framework, we've been sharing with teachers, and they've been applying, the layered continuum of supports, the multi-tiered systems of supports. And within the instructional framework, it allows teachers and students the opportunities, opportunity to receive universal instruction in reading, again, for all students, and then an opportunity for targeted instruction for some students that have had, that the teacher has identified some specific needs, and then an opportunity for some students to receive intensive supports. Along with supporting teachers and principals to implement the instructional framework, we've completed the elementary materials adoption process this year. We've also supported principals to use data cycles with teachers at all of the, at each grade level, and our specialists are working within the classroom to provide embedded coaching. This year, we have trained 109 classroom teachers and interventionists in Orton-Gillingham. We've expanded our Learning Lab classrooms and our kindergarten cadre. This year, we also made strides in designing the English Language Development Strategic Plan and finished the materials adoption and training of special education students. At secondary, we kept our focus on the English Language Arts cohort. This year, our focus was on differentiation and on reading strategies used across all content areas. This year at secondary, we also, the READ Act has moved to the middle level. So, school teams were designed, and they began the process of identifying students with significant reading deficiencies, communicated throughout the year with parents, sharing their students' growth and achievement that's been noted on READ plans. As we move into next year, the majority of our time will be spent on the rollout and supporting the implementation of the newly adopted literacy materials. We'll also continue to use a variety of assessments, the assessments that are embedded in the new materials and other assessments, so that we continually analyze students' skill development in reading. At secondary, we will continue to roll the READ Act forward into seventh grade, and we'll have a focus for evidence-based literacy instructional strategies at both middle and high school in all content areas. So, language arts, science, social studies, all those, all areas. We appreciate the opportunity to share data, to share with you highlights from this year, and our next year's planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Kathy? Oh, let's start with Richard.
Okay, Richard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a quick question as relates to the assessments that you're doing with the program that you're implementing, and how that relates to the common assessments that we just heard about.
The focus for the common assessments in literacy are writing. So, we're looking at the writing tasks that teachers are administering through the Common Writing Assessment. And in the reading, we're continuing to use iReady and iStation, and we're going to, beginning to, we're going to be training teachers on a core phonics assessment in both English and Spanish.
Richard, do you have any other questions?
No, please.
Okay. Kathy?
I'm looking at the supplemental that you gave us with the data, and it just, tell me if I'm reading it wrong, but it doesn't look like we've made a lot of improvement over the last three years. In fact, it looks like we've slid backwards a little bit. So, I'm wondering if you could just address that really briefly? And I have a follow-up question.
Right. So, the, so the, so the pattern that I found in the data where you had a couple of lines that were right on top of each other, and the other lines were over those, that's the same split that you're seeing in the iReady and iStation combined data that you see in the supplemental. That is, the 2016-17 data aren't as good, if they're comparable, as the 2015-16 data. The challenge that we have is that some, there was some change to how iReady posed test content. It isn't the whole of it, but I would draw, I would urge some caution in making the comparisons between 15-16 and 16-17 without knowing that we, that- between 15-16 and 16-17 without knowing that we, that the change in those scores was really in the fall, right? The fall line, oh, and maybe I'll show the slide again, that the, that the change that we're seeing here, right, isn't that, that in each year, students started at the same place, and that the gains weren't as good in the most recent years. It's that students started in different places and generally made roughly the same kinds of gains over time. I would agree that the data aren't showing that there's program improvement as shown in the data in big ways over time. That I would, I would agree with. So there are some concerns.
So we have, as we've toured the schools, we've seen multiple boxes of our new literacy materials. How, is there an expectation that we'll start to see this data improve because we have the new literacy materials? And if so, how long till we start to see these numbers move? I mean, even if we take out the 14, 15, 15, 16, because of the way it was calculated, from 16, 17 to this year, we don't show much improvement. So I'm just curious what the expectation is around that, to try to make, see these numbers. And the FRL and ELL numbers, as you know, are still pretty low and not moving.
And that's the, yes, we would expect to see shifts as we provide our teachers with the materials that they'll have easy access to, to be able to implement the strategies that we're focusing on. Along with what I shared with the EL, the English Language Development Strategic Plan, components within there will also help, we believe, to shift scores, and the work that we've been doing in connection with the special ed department in training teachers. So we're looking at it through multiple lenses and believe that we can shift the trajectory.
Donna?
That answered most of my questions, but explain, this is the easy question, I think. On your circular instructional framework, and under the teacher instruction, you have the Reading One-to-One Conference. That happens during that reading block? And so is part of that, the one-to-one done with volunteers, peers, or is it just teacher one-to-one?
It's done in multiple ways. One of the things that we ask teachers to do is look at the data from the day before, the week before, and plan for specific conferring times with students on a particular next step that that student may have, that other students may not show that same need for. So it's done there, and then we also have opportunities where students in the pairing, where students are working together.
Okay. And then one more quick. The OG training that is happening within this special ed population, is that spilling over into our general ed? And explain how that is happening.
So in special ed, there were two sets of materials that were adopted that are Orton-Gillingham based, so Wilson and Just Words for Secondary. What we've done in the general ed is we have trained on the Orton-Gillingham approach, so that when I shared that we had 109 teachers trained, those were general education teachers going through that training.
Sam or Kitty, questions?
I'm trying to search for the English Language Development Strategies that you talked about, and I'm having a hard time finding it. Where am I finding it?
I'm referencing the strategic plan that was, that was worked on over the course of the year. We don't have the specific strategic plan linked into the document, but we can certainly get that for you.
And when are we going to hear about the strategic plan?
I guess, I guess we could add that to an agenda.
Is that a question specifically about literacy or an overall strategic plan?
Well, the English Language Development Strategic Plan was referenced a while ago.
Okay, thank you. So, Angel, why don't we touch base tomorrow?
Sounds good.
And see what we need to send out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. It gets a little frustrating to see that, at best, taking into account your qualifiers, the data really is flat. Why is that?
Who wants to take that one?
I know we're working really hard, we're making investments. I have hope for the new literacy materials, but, you know, it's limited progress at best.
I don't have good answers for why. I am hopeful that with new materials and new programs, that we will enhance the experiences of students, we will enhance teachers' ability to access interventions when that's what's called for, and to access universal strategies when that's what's called for. But I wouldn't say that in looking at data, I have a rock-solid, crystal-clear, oh, this is why, or if only we, I wouldn't say that these data lend themselves to that. I would say they lend themselves to asking questions about what we're seeing, and to the good work that Angel and her folks are doing, and all of our teachers.
And I would, I would also add to that, that the multi-tiered systems of support is newer to our district. We, as a district implementation, we've had schools using various, various versions of response to intervention, now multi-tiered systems of support. And I believe as we've, as we get better at supporting teachers to use multi-tiered systems of support, a variety of assessment resources, and being able to really pinpoint students' strengths and next steps, that we will see that trajectory shift.
I have a question. We approved, Cindy, I'm not sure who to ask this to, but we approved a program inventory, about two meetings back, I believe, that would give some analysis of our programs. Are programs like this included in that, or is it higher level than this type of program?
You're talking about the data, I can't remember the name, Data Management Group, right, who's coming in to do program evaluations? I am not sure. So I'm going to turn to Bill and Sam, because my understanding is they'll be doing program evaluation, but we didn't talk this morning about whether they'd be evaluating the data programs, the programs we have around data. So maybe Bill and Sam will have an answer to that question. There they are.
So, thank you for asking that question. The initiative inventory that we've contracted up to this point is really just to get an accounting of all of the initiatives and programs that are happening in our district, and to gather data on who's responsible for those, and perhaps some estimate of what we're spending on each of those. It's actually not going to include the program evaluation component. What we hope it does is identify those things which are good targets for us to focus future program evaluation efforts on.
Okay. Well, then, and since you're standing there, I had read about in the recap from the Equity Summit, that some of us participated in, that there'll be some kind of best practices that they're going to draw from other districts. Will that, and that equity strategic plan is different than the ELD plan, but will it tie into the literacy plan?
Yeah, all these things are going to sync up. I think that what we're hopeful for is that Dr. Anderson, when Dr. Anderson comes on board and starts the strategic planning process that's more comprehensive for the entire district, that we weave the plans for where we're going with literacy, where we're going with English Language Development programming, and where we're going with equity into that. So none of those have completely solidified yet. I think we're leaving enough flexibility in those so that they can evolve as this strategic plan that Dr. Anderson will be working with all of us as a community develop, as that evolves.
Okay. Donna?
I appreciate all you've done, and I really appreciated, Jonathan, your point about if we knew exactly what to do, we would do it so that everybody would succeed. My, my biggest concern, coming from the special ed background in all my life, is that we don't wait till kids are below the 12th percentile to get them the supports and services they need, so that we can see that huge growth in our charts and our school district.
Other comments on literacy?
Well, thank you so much. I think our next item is revisions to regulation ECAR, video surveillance equipment.
It looks like Melissa's ready. Melissa?
So I'll just speak to this for a second. So it had come to our attention, there was, there was some language in the previous regulation that dropped out with the revision, and so staff took a look at that comment, and we're okay putting that language back in. So that's all that's on the information item, is adding that language back in to the regulation, and staff will move forward with it.
Okay, any questions? Okay, great. I'm still okay with the board, I'll go ahead with action items, and then maybe after action items, we'll have a break. Does that sound okay with everyone? Yeah, consent group, sorry. Okay, so I'll read the list of items. 8.1 Personnel Items, 8.2 Approval of Minutes, May 22, 2018 Special Meeting, 8.3 Approval of Minutes, May 22, 2018 Regular Meeting, 8.4 2018-19 Cash Management, 8.5 Acceptance of Donation Mesa Elementary, 8.6 Acceptance of Donation Ryan Elementary, 8.7 Amendment to the Construction Agreement for the Implementation of Interior Security Cameras, 8.8 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Eisenhower Elementary School, 8.9 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Cole Elementary School, 8.10 Approval of Resolution 1820 Summit Charter Contract Negotiation Extension, 8.11 Award of Contract for District Vehicle GPS Management System and Student Ridership Software, 8.12 Award of Contract for School Bus Security Cameras, 8.13 ERP Enterprise Resource Planning Consulting Services Contract Plant Morgan P L L C, 8.14 Final Approval of Fountas and Pennell Classroom Third Grade for Use at Monolingual Schools as Core Reading Materials, 8.15 Ratification of Meet and Confer Process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team Processional Technical Employees and Non-Representative Employees, 8.16 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Education Association, 8.17 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Educational Office Professionals, 8.18 Grant Special Education IDA Part B Colorado Department of Education 18, 8.19 Grant Special Education IDA Part C Preschool Colorado Department of Education 18, 8.20 Grant Special Education School-to-Work Program Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation 18. Okay, so are there any items the board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Donna?
8.13 and 8.15.
8.13 and 8.15. Okay. Are there any other items board members would like to pull? All right. Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Kathy, second by Kitty. Okay, and any questions on the other items? Whoops, oh, do we do the roll call first? No, discussion first, okay? Any questions on the items not 8.13 and 8.15? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve those items? We already have a motion, so we can call, yeah, let's call the roll on those items.
Benford is not here. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, do we want to talk about 8.13 and 8.15? Donna?
I, a lot of the items were added late, and these were two that I haven't had a chance to read in detail or compile questions, so I'm guessing it's possible others might have had the same. I pulled these and printed everything out Thursday evening, I believe, and then when I got back today from being in the wilderness, I realized these were here. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to really thoroughly investigate them, and I hate to, I don't feel comfortable voting and approving something I don't fully understand, or much less having my questions answered, so that's why I pulled them.
So 8.15, is that, was that the APT handbook? Yeah, we sent that well in advance.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've sent that about 10 days ago.
I still had some questions on it, and I can pull them right now, just ask a couple.
Tina, we need a motion.
Oh, sorry.
For each of those. So take one at a time.
Okay, so let's start with 8.13 then, sorry.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
I second it. Any discussion?
So, are there, there are questions about the contract or about the system?
Just I haven't had enough time to look over it, so I just didn't feel comfortable in approving it or even asking questions, so there, that's, that's the only reason I pulled it, and maybe everyone else is fine and has read through it.
I read through it, I thought it was fine. Sam?
I read through it, and I'm fine with it, but I don't know, I guess if we're, if we leave this hanging through the summer, that might create some problems.
Yes, that would create a problem.
So I apologize, Donna. I know typically I'm in favor of board members having the time to get their questions answered and discussion happening, but feeling some urgency around this one, so I will, I will vote for it.
Also, I think that you can make time with this group to have questions after, and you can bring up concerns at the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? Okay. Okay, so do we need to call roll on the motion that's out there by Kitty to approve 8.13?
The motion is to approve 8.13. Benford is not present. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to 8.15, ratification of the meet and confer process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team Processional Technical, is it professional technical employees or processional? It's a typo, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah. And non-represented employees, okay. Donna, do you want to talk about this? Oh, first we need a motion. Kathy?
Need to approve 8.15. Second.
Okay, second by Kitty. All right, discussion?
Okay, I just need a few questions answered. So on the printout, because I guess, as Tina pointed out, it was sent out a week ago, but I guess I did, I missed that, and so I printed it all out and was going through it today. And so on the, the two, the salary range comparison, BVSD versus market, there was two, the mid-range doesn't agree with the mid-range on the other one. So one of them says 152,411, the other one says 157,593, and then on the COO, the mid-range 161, and the mid-range on the other that we were sent out is 166. If you could explain that, then I'll feel a little bit better.
Great question. The, the handout that you received, the BVSD versus market with the colors on that, this was done, this salary analysis was done last year, so it was before the proposed 3.4 and COLA. This salary range here represents the COLA. That's why there's a difference in the mid.
Okay.
Yeah, that's confusing. That was confusing to send out both handouts like that.
I thought it was just a typo.
No.
Donna, any other questions?
Now, that answers my question, and I do appreciate that you said that I could make, because Rob sent, there were other questions I had, and Rob answered one by email today, and I was like, okay, good. So sometimes when you rush in from somewhere and they're trying to read through all this, I just, there's a lot to digest for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, or should we call the roll on approving 8.15?
The motion is to approve 8.15. Benford is not present. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Can we move on or does anyone need a break? Okay, let's move on to our action items. Action item nine point one, adoption of the 2018-19 budget. I think we have Bill Sutter coming to join us.
So there's no presentation that's noted in there, the one or collection of changes from what was presented at the last meeting that actually included those changes, they just weren't wrapped into the budget document because they came through kind of late, but everything that's in there is what was presented at the last meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Kathy or Kitty? Second by Kitty, Kathy. Okay. Discussion or questions? We've been looking at this budget a long time. Okay.
The process gets better every year and I appreciate, Bill, all your work to keep us in the loop, to answer our questions, even when we're asking the same questions sometimes, and I think we're, we're getting to a much improved process for developing the budget, so I'm just happy about that. Thank you, Tina, for, for all your efforts to guide us on that.
Well, and thanks to all of us, I think we did it together and I echo your comments. I felt like things went really much better this year and thank you for all your work on that. Okay, seeing no more discussion, Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford is not present. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our next item is nine point two, approval of resolution night, excuse me, 1821 House Bill 171375 plan relating to the distribution of local mill levy override revenue. Okay. Is, I need a motion to approve, whoops?
We'll need a motion, but I'm, I'm going to look at, Melissa, do you want to present it all? Do you want to address anything?
I wasn't planning on it.
She's not planning on it, so if we have specific questions, we'll call people up.
Okay, well, let's start with a motion. Anyone want to make a, okay, Kitty?
I'm going to move to approve Boulder Valley School District Resolution Number 18. What are we calling it? I'm sorry.
1821.
1821.
Second? Kathy? Okay. Discussion and questions. Donna?
I have a discussion which kind of includes that I'd like to move, that we add a little sentence to the very last paragraph that will help our charter community and families know for sure that we're going to honor the contract and I would like it to read, or at the rate required by the applicable charter contract, whichever is higher. It's in there?
Yeah, they already have that in the, it's already in the resolution.
We must have put it in after I, at the very last paragraph?
Yeah, second to last paragraph.
Second to last. How about the last paragraph?
I don't know if we need it twice.
Let me go back to, okay, hold on. Where are we, nine? Okay, here we are, yeah, there's a lot. Thank you.
So it's that second to last paragraph? Right there with the sentence, yeah.
Yeah. Certified fund for the budget year, or whichever is higher, okay. Never mind.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing done, Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford is not present. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item is nine point three, the cancellation of the June 26, 2018 board meeting. Given that we've approved the budget and the union contract and we've done HB 171375, I feel that we can probably cancel this and let staff take a break and get ready for Rob's arrival. So I, I would like to move that we cancel the June 26, 2018 board meeting. Okay, second by Kitty. Okay, discussion.
Well, I, I kind of wanted to wait to see how far we get on our study items on the policies JS and JBEE and wondering if, I'm fine with canceling a regular meeting, but if we whole, if it's still the option exists to have a perhaps additional work session or discussion time before the end of June.
Is that a possibility to add a work session if we feel like we need more time with the JS?
Of course, you can add a work session whenever you like and we will be there with bells on. We will love it.
A little edge in Dr. Stevenson's commentary. Short timer.
You of course can add a work session. If you cancel the board meeting on the 26th, but you need a work session, we would just put the work session in there.
Okay. All right.
Can I have a question on the cancellation of the June 26 meeting? When are, are we meeting in July?
No, our next meeting would be the fir, first, second Tuesday in August.
Okay.
Okay.
Good break.
It's been our practice to take July off.
Yes.
So when would we discuss, you're saying at the work session, Sam, explain to me, at the work session, what would we discuss that maybe at a board meeting we could put on as a study item?
Oh, yeah, either way could, could happen, that's, that's true, Donna. I just, if, I'm wondering how far we'll get on study item 10.1 this evening and if we feel like we want to do additional discussion, you know, we could do that at a work session rather than a regular meeting.
Because we probably won't be able to approve it as a policy until August anyway.
Right.
So it doesn't really make a difference at this point. So, and that's the rationale, while we don't need a full-on board meeting.
If, if you adopt the policies, if you make changes, you need to adopt them for study. Changes need to be made and then you won't, you won't adopt them until August is what would happen, but you're probably okay because it's July.
So we won't necessarily, oh, well, not even necessarily, we won't have, if, if we don't have a meeting, that we might adopt a policy on the 26th, then we won't have the cell phone or the internet.
If you do a work session and, but let's say you do policy revisions tonight, if you recommend revisions tonight and you accept the policy for study, then yes, they'd be for study and you could adopt them in August. So yes, you could adopt them before the first day of school, I think. Melissa's nodding, yes?
We would almost have to have the board meeting then to do that. Would that be correct?
In August.
No, I meant on the 26th, we would almost.
No, you can do that at a work session. You can do that.
So am I hearing that we will have a work session between now and the next board meeting?
I think it depends how much progress we make tonight and also it probably will depend on how much, whatever we talk about needs to be vetted with our principals and our teachers and our community, because some, you know, depending on how this discussion goes, it may have greater implications than just what would give us in a two-week time period after the closure of schools. Does that make sense, Richard?
Yes, so can we agree then that we'll have, we will cancel June 26 board meeting and then depending on the study session tonight, we'll act on a work session later on?
Yes, because we don't have anything else to discuss, so we won't have any more items.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
Did you get a second? Did you get a second on your motion?
I got a second on the motion, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to call the, are you okay? Do I have any more questions, Donna?
No.
Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford is not present. Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and we don't have any items pulled from consent grouping? Yep. And, does anyone need a break before we talk about policy JS? Okay, we're going to call a five-minute break.
Richard, are you doing okay?
Come on? Yeah. We've got a bunch of dogs in Mexico.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Richard.
Hey, how you doing, bro?
This is break time right now.
Oh. So does that mean I can talk or not?
Yeah. Yeah, you can do, yeah, do anything you want.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes, people can hear you, so.
They better not see nothing.
All right. We are now going to our only, our, excuse me, our first study item, which is policies JS and JBEE.
All right, President, Marquess, board members, Dr. Stevenson, thank you for the opportunity to go through proposed revisions to both GBEE and JS. GBEE being the employee, internet and communications policy and JS being the equivalent for students. I'm going to start just by kind of recapping what we discussed at the work session on May 15th and then we can dive into some of the details that are being proposed. But before we do that, let me just recap, why are we changing this policy now? The last time these policies were changed was 2012, so six years in the world of technology seems like an eternity. And one of the things that I would like to recommend is that we put this on an every other year rotation going forward, so this becomes an evolving policy as the technology evolves. We, we need to get terminology in these policies now that encompass all of the things that are happening, including the new phenomenon of wearables that students are bringing to classroom. These are items that you can even talk through now, but they're mostly used for texting at, at this point. We want to update the, these policies to be in alignment with the Student Data Transparency and Security Act. This is the policy you approved at the end of last year, which was mandated by state law. We want to address gaps with the evolving tools and we want to address current initiatives and practices, including the use of cell phones, so we have language now included in JS with regard to the cell phones. The revision process is one that includes a lot of different members. Of course, we're taking the lead as IT, but it's been through legal review, we've taken it to the tech contacts for, for review, discussion, a cabinet has happened, we've sent it to BVEA and the charter schools, DTAC, the District Technology Advisory Committee has weighed in on it, and of course, we're now at your level for final input and ultimately approval. We're not going to go through the actual red line documents, although you have them in the board documents, they're out there for public viewing now on board docs as well. Anything that's read indicates, indicates that those phrases have been removed from the existing policy, anything underlined is new text. If it's not read or underlying, it's existing text that is staying from the 2012 updates. We are not going to go through the regulations or the exhibits, we're going to stick with the policy because that's where most of the, the changes are. All right, so what are the changes? I'm going to start with the employee policy. We have three slides. I have three slides here. I'll go through them. At the end, I'll pause, and then we can have a discussion on the employee piece before we move on to the student section. All right, so the first thing is, we are broadening the definition of the policy to include all district technology resources. This should then protect us in the event the next iPad, or the next wearable, or the next whatever technology is, comes into fruition. We are strengthening the language that staff must report observed access to inappropriate material. So we already have this in the policy today, but as we heard from many parents, there's a feeling that when inappropriate material is coming through the web filter for whatever reason, then there is an obligation on our employees today, and we want to strengthen that, to really make sure that teachers, administrators, any staff member that sees something inappropriate puts in the right information to IT so that we can look into it and we can get it blocked going forward. Staff should not have any expectation of privacy. This is already in the current policy, but just calling it out here that when you work here, we're a public entity, and what we do is public. The district reserves the right to use de-encryption technology. I want to stress that we do not use this today, but as there's more encryption, there are times where we may be asked either by our superintendent, or by legal, or by HR, or by law enforcement, to see if we can help with investigations. There is technology available to do de-encryption. We would only use it if we were asked to in those specific cases. Use of technology for personal gain is prohibited, so that's called out more clearly now. And another, a new one is account names and passwords shall not be used outside of BVSD. So this is a security reason, knowing that if people are using their BVSD ID and saying BVSD password in systems that are not part of BVSD, and those systems get compromised, then that opens the door to compromising our own systems. Hotspots are prohibited unless there's an emergency or internet outage. So one of the challenges you heard from numerous parents, you've heard it from me as well, is that hotspots can easily be started. These are your phones, turning them into their own internet signal, and they bypass all of our safety and security features. So we want to put it in policy for the first time that no one is to have hotspots unless there's an emergency or the internet is actually down. We are asking for USB sticks, memory sticks as you know them, or memory card usage to be prohibited without the express consent of either myself or designee. This is in reflection that viruses are, they travel very easily through memory sticks, and in this day and age where we have Google Drive to store our data, and Google Drive data is accessible on our phones, it's accessible on Chromebooks, on Macs, PCs, we have another mechanism that is secure to transmit our data from device to device. Lock screen enablement is required, so this includes your PC, Mac. When you walk away from it, it should have a timer on it so that your screen locks. This prevents others from walking up and using your machine. We are going to be doing a new security audit now that you've approved the budget to do that. When we did our first audit seven years ago, we did social engineering, and they sat down at an employee's desk that didn't have a lock screen, and they, from there, went into the web browser, they got passwords, that got them further in the system, and they were eventually able to get into the data center. It's that type of incident that we are trying to protect against. Storage of student data in external storage providers other than Google Drive is prohibited. So this is to get away with storing things in Box or Dropbox, which may not be FERPA compliant, they may not be compliant with the new student data privacy laws that exist. Google G Suite for Education, which we use, is compliant with all of those, and there's no reason to be using these other cloud storage solutions since we provide one on our own. We encourage multi-factor authentication. This is the technology that is available to us today in Google and a number of our other applications. You may know it as going to your banking account, and you need to have a text message from them with a code. That's dual factor. We're not saying it's required because it is a big step, but we're highly encouraging it, and we want to put that into our trainings that go out to our employees. We now have language that says that student data shall be destroyed when it's no longer needed. There's also regulations that'll go with this that will, that will say that email will be auto-deleted after three years, and that any accounts of employees or students that leave will be permanently deleted after 180 days. And that's just to prevent data being around in accounts that just doesn't need to be there. Staff are prohibited from communicating with students through personal social media accounts. Professional accounts can be set up and used, though. This means that if you're, say, a track coach, and you want to communicate through Facebook to your students, you can set up a Facebook account that clearly designates that you're the coach of that track team, and you are communicating in that capacity. We've expanded the definition of staff to now include employees, volunteers, contractors, and student interns. So it wasn't clear before how far we went, but now that's spelled out clearly. And then the last items, I think I covered most of these. Oh, no, admin rights. On PCs today, there are admin rights given to everybody. We're going to remove those admin rights. You need admin rights to install software. Since we provide the software for the district, you typically don't need those in this day and age, but there is a way to sign an acceptable use agreement specifically to get admin rights. If you believe in your job, you need to have that. You and your director would need to sign it in order to get that capability back. I talked about the 180 days for terminated accounts and three years to auto purge email. All right, so those are the suggested changes for the employee policy on internet and communications. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions before I move on to the student side.
So it says that the student data is destroyed by whom?
So student data is destroyed by, could be numerous entities, but the individual by policy should remove and eliminate student data. So if you're a teacher and you have class data, you have it in a spreadsheet, you're working with that, now the year goes on, and you're into the next year, and you don't need that data, then it's that type of data that should be deleted. It's not like there's anything automatically, though, that would delete it from a personal account. By the way, we have similar language with our vendors. So when a contract is terminated with a vendor, if they have student data, they have to destroy that data. That's actually baked into the state law.
How do you address the incognito access?
The incognito, so incognito, are you talking about in a web browser, being able to? So for employees, we don't restrict incognito mode. For students, we do. That's just, it's not in policy, that is just a practice that we do. All right, we okay to move on to the student section? All right, many of these changes are similar, so I'll go through them pretty quickly, and then we'll be able to do the same thing when we get to the, to the end. Broadening the definition is in there. We removed a lot, yes.
Andrew, sorry, Richard has a question. I'm going to turn his microphone on.
Okay. Sorry, Richard, hold on one sec. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm muted, sorry about that.
That's okay, we can hear you now.
The question that I have, can you hear me?
Yes.
The question that I have, Andrew, is on the storage of student data in external storage providers other than Google Drive is prohibited. Can you explain why Google Drive is excluded?
Why Google Drive is not excluded?
Right.
So Google is the platform the district has chosen for our productivity suite, for communications, for storage. That decision was made seven years ago, and it is the cloud storage technology that we use here in this district.
Okay. And then I, the other question that I have is on the, on the last bullet point on this slide here, the staff now includes employees and volunteers, contractors, students, teachers, interns, et cetera. Who are the et ceteras?
Well, I think what we're trying to do is capture any new titles that may come in. We don't have knowledge of anybody beyond who we've already identified, but if there was a new category that would come in, and they were working on behalf of the district in some way, that would cover them until we can update the policy to be more specific.
Okay, so that would include software folks and everything else that?
Those are included, yeah, those are included already under contractors, so I hire contractors sometimes to help us with some of the IT work that we need to do. They are already covered.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, coming back to the JS changes, the second bullet has to do with referencing state and federal law as opposed to duplicating the language. There was language duplicated in the policy. We've now simplified to simply reference the current law. De-encryption technology is in the student policy. Data should also be destroyed even when students have it, when they don't need it any longer. We also spell out, though, that attacking, destroying, or disrupting district technology is explicitly prohibited. So this helps us when students are found hacking, basically, or getting into things that they shouldn't be getting into. We haven't had a known incident in that in some time, but by policy, we want to clearly spell it out, they shall not be doing that. Same thing with user IDs and passwords not being shared outside of BVSD. Hotspots, unless it's a declared emergency. Lock screen. The USB memory sticks. Communications through technologies should be for educational purposes only. This is trying to get in policy communications that may be done, say, over Google Hangout with inappropriate individuals. This is trying to make it very clear that if it's not educationally related, they shouldn't be doing it. So the cellphone language is now in there. We basically took the language that is currently in our student handbook, we updated it for the new technologies such as wearables, and it is on, I believe it's page six of the Redline, and it basically says that cell phones are to be off at school and at school events unless school personnel says it's okay for them to be on. We removed a vandalism section that was in there. Once again, to clarify, it was already covered in the security section, and that was it with regard to the student policy.
Okay, um, questions?
And I talked to you briefly about this at the break, but I'm wondering if the language on cell phones could be stronger, somehow discouraging them from even coming into the classroom, cell phones and wearables. Just because I'm concerned about the distracting nature of cell phones and the watches and the ability for kids to sneak them out and turn them on. I recognize there's not lockers everywhere, but I've just been thinking about if there's any possibility of strengthening the language around cell phones to just keep them out of the classroom. I don't know if there's a way to do that, or we could at least strongly recommend that, but that's something I was wondering if other board members shared that interest, or if there was a way we could accomplish that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sam. The more I'm reading about it, the more I realize that we don't really know what the potential harm of too much technology and kids being in screen time all the time are. So it would be good to limit that, and I think making cell phones be off is a good idea.
I, I agree, and I, I don't think it can be too prescriptive, but I would like something like preferably outside of the space where instruction is taking place, or you know, something like that, because I would broaden it outside of the classroom since we have PE classes where, right, auditoriums where a cellphone isn't appropriate, and even in a, and there's this lunchroom issue too, which I don't support cell phones over lunch because it precludes dialogue and interaction, so I don't know if there's a way to just have that as a consideration.
So we could absolutely add text that leaves what we have, but also says turned off and are outside of the learning space. It's really hard to say they have to be in a backpack, because there may not be a backpack, or a locker, because there may not be a locker, but the generic term outside the learning space, I think could strengthen it a bit.
The other thing I might encourage you to do is, Andrew is going to be doing, I don't know that Andrew's going to do it personally, but his department is going to be doing some parent surveying in the fall, and I think you may want some data. I think it's really hard to know where parents are. I mean, they don't want their kids distracted, but a lot of parents want their kids to have their phones so they can get them if they need them. So I think I might encourage you to get the data and then begin to develop what the expectations would be based on data from our parents and data from our teachers, and Andrew has plans to work with BVEA, so that we have various groups telling us what would work for them, and that gives you a foundation for if you want to restrict or whatever you want to do. You can say, we, we had parent data, we had teacher data, we had, you know. So I would just encourage you not to make any decisions without that data.
Well, I did agree with these comments, but my question is a little off on a tangent on your presentation when you said the hotspots unless declared, a declared emergency. I wanted you to explain that one, and then you said, limit the cell phones except school events, and I wanted a little more clarity on what you meant by that.
All right, so let me do the hotspot one first. The internet itself is highly reliable in this district. We were going back, and it's been a couple years since we've had a district-wide outage. So the resiliency of our network is good, and it's not likely we're going to have an outage. However, outages, just like your phone, your old landline phones would go down periodically, the internet could go down. That could be a situation where they're in the middle of some lesson where the teachers need the kids connected, and then the teacher could say, it's okay for you to turn on your hotspots. That would be an exception that would very rarely need to be enacted.
So they would need to have their phone with them?
In that particular case. Now, if, if we decide that phones need to be outside the learning space, the teachers could say, go get your phones, you know? Absolutely, there are different things that could happen, but I think that's the corner case, more the situation that is not going to happen very frequently at all. What's more important to me is that we have something in policy that says hotspots are basically, you shouldn't be using them. They shouldn't be competing with our, our networks. I'm sorry?
Sorry. And then school events, are you talking about during the school day, after-school football games?
The way it's worked right now, it basically says phones are off in the classroom and at school events as well, unless somebody has said they can be on. And that language exists today in the student handbook, and we did not change it as we put it into policy JS.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Richard.
You know, anecdotally, I've been talking with a few parents, and I haven't heard one single parent that would be against limiting the use of cell phones in, in the, in schools, especially in elementary schools. But I agree, and I want to echo what Cindy said, that I think we should really conduct an intensive survey of parents as it relates to the, some of the policy changes that we're highlighting here. We've heard from a lot of parents already around a few things, like the, the, what do you call them? That protects kids from going into pornography and all of that stuff, or, or bad items in the, in the internet. or, or, or bad items in the, in the internet. So I, I think that we really should take some time in terms of trying to get some more information from parents, at least on a, on a more scientific basis and see where our parents are at as it relates to some of these particular policy changes. Since now we, it seems like we do have a little bit of time to be able to do that. I know parents are gone over the summer, but I think that we can probably get some parents to answer a, a survey. So I, in the mind right now, in the mindset that we should probably pause a little bit, take some time, hear from parents, more on a scientific basis, and then make some decisions.
So along those, those lines, there are some things in this policy that I'm hopeful we can get approved and get in. Even the, the cellphone policy is pretty conservative in that that language exists pretty much today. And then we do the survey in the fall after the students settle down, after the parents are engaged again. And then we can come back for mid-year revisions. We don't have to wait a two-year cycle or a one-year cycle. We can come back once we get that data. And if it's compelling to change something, we can do that.
I echo what Richard and Cindy said. I don't think that anecdotal evidence given to individual board members is a good way to make policy. So I'd like to have a little more systematic feedback. I understand it already says in policy, for example, at school events. But I'm thinking, okay, so my daughter goes to a football game and she wants to call me. She can't, right? Because she's at a school event and she's not allowed to have her phone on. And how do you police that? So I feel like we have some kind of, and I also feel like it's different by grade level. I don't have the angst over elementary school kids not having their phones with them in the classroom. But I feel a little differently when you get to high school. I don't think they should have them in the classroom, but I think it should be up to, I mean, I think there are some ways where we could be overbroad in that. And I'd like to hear from the community before we make a decision.
Okay, just so you all know, that language is in the handbooks today. So that's, it's.
I know, but it's, I don't think it's enforced, would be my guess. And, and if we turn it into policy and we start turning our principals and teachers into, you know, people have to walk around at football games to make sure kids don't have their phones on. That's not going to happen. And then what do you do if they do?
Right.
I mean, I just think we have to be careful in being overbroad in what we're asking.
And is the policy you're suggesting going to include anything about gaming? The social media, the chat functions?
Not in policy, but in practice, what we're doing there is implementing input from our principals. So we're going to start, start blocking gaming at the middle school level starting next year. So that'll be new. We'll have a tiered model. So basically, elementary school gaming, social media is blocked. As they get a little bit older, social media is then turned on. As they get into high school, then gaming is turned on so that we're preparing them as they go into the real world, go to college on those things. So it's a tiered model that is not in place today, but will be in place for the start of the school year. Now, we could put that in regulation if you, if you wanted. But it's, it's happening just by.
So back to the survey, and I do, I, I like to deal with data, not necessarily all anecdotal. But I do think when we have that much input, we've got to pay attention to what our community is asking. So back to the survey and the data that we would get. Would there, would we be able to see how that, those questions are going to look as that survey is being put together?
Absolutely.
And would it deal with some of these other things like the chat rooms and the gaming and the?
We would ask a broad spectrum of questions. And we want to know more about the One to Web programs that have been implemented. We want to know more about the, the newer programs that we're, we're implementing. We've started to distance learning at some of our schools, so we'd love to get feedback on that. So it'd be a technology survey that would include numerous topics.
And at the earliest, what, when might that survey happen?
October timeframe would be the earliest.
I agree with what Kathy said about football games, basketball games, whatever. But I think that could be addressed in the policy by giving principals the discretion to say at what school events can kids have their cellphones? You know, they probably don't want them on during a concert, but during a football game, yes.
And that can happen under the policy as written today because it says, you know, at the discretion of the school administrator. I got to quit talking with my hands here.
Donna, did you have a question?
Not a question. And I did like your idea of, of by opening access a little at a time to various things that kids would have access to. But, but there's also, we heard from our community, the issue of a teacher saying, take a screenshot of this. So that would give not only teachers, but parents and students the advance notice if we had it more definitive on when this is allowed. That, you know, a fifth grader, the teacher might not be able to say, take out your cellphone and take a screenshot of the board for your assignments.
This is true. Yeah, I don't know how to address that one directly, right? Because, you know, phones do have some benefit with their cameras and their features. And when you create a policy that makes it black and white, they can't use them. That does take away some of the positives while protecting against the negatives.
So, but you were saying on gaming or various other things, you said there would be a slow increase. And so that's where I was talking about, would that also apply to cellphones? And, you know, when they're allowed to be used?
That's a good question. Today, no, it's not a scaffolding cellphone policy. It's basically, cellphones are off unless an administrator says it's okay to have them on. Now, the individual policies and practices at the school could then take the policy and adapt them for age-appropriate usage. So in, in other words, a high school principal could say, all right, in this school, if your teacher says bring out your phone to take a picture of this assignment or this, whatever it is we're doing, that would be appropriate under the current language being proposed.
Can I make a comment about that? I, I still worry about cellphones being integrated as a school supply because we haven't asked students to bring cellphones as a school supply as an, as part of their educational toolkit.
Yes.
And I don't think we're applying, we're giving them to students who don't have them. So I, I just want us to be cautious a little bit about cellphones being, becoming part of an expectation
Right.
to complete the curriculum that we're providing to students. So that would be a concern I have. And then I just had a, and Richard, thank you for bringing that up about taking a little bit of time to understand the broader community better. I really, I think that's a great idea. So I really support the survey. And, but I'm also glad that we're thinking about moving this language from the handbook into policy. But with sensitivity to Kathy's point, because if this isn't, you know, if this doesn't happen, then you're violating policy, that's a big deal. And we take it seriously. So I want to make sure that there's not a, you know, a very punitive piece to this. So that's.
Yeah, one thing you'll notice in the policy, we do not prescribe any consequences. At least the philosophy up to this point has been to let the principal, teacher, determine what the appropriate consequences are. So it's not prescriptive in that way.
Okay, and then, and I think we had, when I, and thank you for the IT tour this morning. I think we had talked a little bit about getting feedback on gaming at the high school level as well.
Yes, from the principals.
And I'll be curious to hear more about that as.
I will definitely share that once we can get it.
And then the other piece I wanted to understand is it, it also says, under the personal electronic devices in the cellphone handbook, it includes laptops. And so that's kind of interesting. Does that differentiate between the, the school-issued Chromebooks and a personal laptop?
I think what it, I think what it's trying to get to is you should not have any personal device out that is not authorized. Now, you'll have a school like Monarch High School, which is moving on to the Chromebook program. But currently, you are required to bring a laptop with you. That laptop could be a Chromebook, a Mac, or a PC. Those are personal devices. So at Monarch High School, they would need to look at the policy and say, it's okay for you to use your personal laptop because that's part of their individual one-to-one program. At a school like Centaurus, where every student has a school-issued one Chromebook, then the policy could hold where it says, yeah, you can't bring in your own laptop unless they made an exception for it.
Right, so then, so at Fairview, where they don't have a specific one-to-one program, but I think a lot of kids bring in laptops. That's just a school decision that they can make.
Exactly.
Okay, and then my last question I had was on times when our filtering system, and I know we're going to do more to filter out more content and tighten that up. How can we measure ourselves to make sure that our kids are not seeing unsuitable content? What can we do?
So this is a dilemma, no matter what web filter that we have. Because all web filters will filter too much in some cases and not enough in other cases. So one of the examples that was being brought up by the parents was the album cover. I think it was from Two Live Crew. You may have remembered it as the four naked butts that was on one of the posters. That's an album cover. The filter doesn't block that because it views it as music and art. And so there's no way for, that I'm aware of, for us to know that that got through and it may be okay for some because it's under that art, music. And it's not okay for others because it's four naked butts. So the filter is going to do what the filter is going to do based upon the settings we have. It's not like there's a knob we can say, get more granular and shut off more of that type of art without shutting off all music, for example.
I mean, I just think any way that we could do better than we have would be great. If there's just, and I don't know how to do it, I don't have the answers, obviously not myself.
I would, I've encouraged some of you, and I know this makes some people a little scratchy, but I would encourage you to search for those things that you think are inappropriate. Because I think you'll be surprised at what doesn't get through. If you look hard enough though, for an album cover, for example, that's offensive to me, you will find that type of thing. But you won't find pornography coming through. You won't find gaming coming through when we've got it blocked. You have to go looking for it. You have, you have to actually be in violation of policy JS or JBEE, which also says, I didn't have it as a bullet point, but it also says that you will not go out looking for inappropriate material.
Okay, Donna?
Well, back to the devices and the various high schools. And something that you said earlier about, you know, just preparing students not only for the working world, but life beyond high school. I, I do think that we're going to have to consider that not all students are going to want a Chromebook as their device of choice. And, and so I, you were explaining then on the One to Web, it's Chromebook or nothing?
The, the district-issued device is a Chromebook. And there's many reasons for that, from cost, we can afford that, to the fact that most software is now running in the web. It's running in a web browser. So it works fine. It doesn't work for everything. And so to prepare kids for those other experiences, we had a successful pilot at Centaurus High School this year with Ann Root, the teacher for computer science. And Ann helped us test an Amazon product. It is a Windows desktop. That gets spun up for every student, they have their own. And they can do hardcore programming in that Windows environment. It's 10 cents an hour. And it's a solution so those students don't have to come into a lab. They could take their Chromebook at home at night. They can log in through that desktop as a service. And they can do those things in a Windows world that maybe they can't do in the Chromebook world. Ironically though, you can program now in the cloud. There are programming environments you can access 100% in the cloud. And it's like all software is migrating away from having my CD, installing it locally. Now, I'm not advocating that everybody will use Chromebooks one day. But we're finding those solutions for those individual cases where a desktop is needed.
I'm just saying they would, might want their own device and, and navigate towards something other than a Chromebook that, that they want to use and that's going to move out into the world beyond high school with them.
So our policies do not restrict parents from buying a MacBook Pro and for the students to use it. The one caveat to that is they cannot use it for standardized testing. We're able to lock the Chromebooks down so they can't go Google the answers in the middle of the test. And so, but other than that, if a parent wanted their student to use a MacBook Pro and, and the principal said it's okay, then we don't restrict it from our network. You know, they'd be able to do that.
I have another comment, if I may. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Richard.
Thank you. My comment is, you know, in listening to various board members to give you some input on the policy, it seems like, like the policies, the, the highlights that you're highlighting are, are pretty good. But my question, Andrew, is more along the line of the, the actual use of technology in the classroom. Like, I, I don't believe in my heart that, or in my minds, that parents are against technology at all whatsoever because I think that's something that we're all going to be using forever. But it seems like, like, you know, when we were talking earlier with literacy, with the literacy study, and then they presented the ELD strategic plan or a strategy plan. I, I haven't seen it. But it sounds like we don't have a technology strategic plan, at least for classroom instruction. So what I'm hearing, you know, because I'm hearing that we're all over the places that I'm hearing, you know, Monarch has this, we have the one-on-one, we have Chromebooks, or we have the cows, we have this, we have that. But I don't believe that we've ever sat down and really started looking strategically how we can best use technology in the classroom. You know, from the beginning, from kindergarten, that, that includes a lot of stuff that you've been talking about, Andrew. But, but if we could just really start thinking about, how can we focus strategically on how we can best use technology in the classroom so that it does not, um, create some of the issues that we're currently seeing now as it relates to the filtering processes and all of that stuff? I know that, that when we went through the IT tour, you showed us that, that little box and then the coffee filter that's up in the box, which is pretty cute. The, that, that it's, it's not, it's not going to filter everything out. But I think that, that if we just took some time to start looking at, you know, really strategically, what is it that we can do to make this thing work? And, 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 you know, bring in technology at a, at a, at a pace where everybody's going to understand it, everybody's going to use it well, et cetera. I don't know if I'm making any sense or not, but it seems to me like, it seems like, like that part is missing.
Yeah, I think, I, I hear you and I understand what you're saying. I think at the elementary level, we have not done what we could do in order to outline what, how technology can be used there. That is largely due to the fact that our resources have been focused on the well-defined program of One to Web, which is our strategic plan for the secondary level. You know, the board approved technology for every student from fifth grade to 12th grade. And that is where we've been focusing our energy. It's interesting for me, as I'm absorbing and talking with parents, that most of the discussion is at the elementary school level, with the exception of the phone usage at Casey Middle School. And so we know we have to do something better to communicate with the parents and to articulate a clearer vision for the elementary school level. But you're absolutely right, we have not done that to date.
Richard, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I, I guess the question that I would have is, you know, as we're looking at the policy and I have to admit that I haven't seen the Redline policies yet. But I'm, I'm real curious to see if we have anything in there that talks about the use of technology at the elementary level.
We do not call out specifically by grade level in the policy. There are practices that are adopted in support of the policies that differentiate at each of the different levels. So that includes like the web filtering. So that includes like the web filtering being different at each of the levels.
And that's why I think maybe why it would be very significant when we do a parent survey, if we could include some of those questions in there and answer a parent survey. So we have a better handle, at least from a parent perspective, on what that policy really should look like. That's, that's all I, that's my advice coming.
If I put together a survey for you to submit questions that we could then include in the survey, is that something that maybe you would be willing to do? Cuz I think that would help me understand the specifics that, that you as a group um are, are concerned with. We, of course, will come up with numerous questions with our knowledge and challenges.
Or, or maybe you wanna um make a, or, or suggest a survey?
And bring it back to you.
And then maybe, uh, we could provide feedback.
Sounds good. I'm happy to do that.
Um, and Kathy's next, and then Kitty, I believe.
This, Andrew may, I may need to bring it up also to agenda setting, but as we talked about um during the tour, I also have concerns about ad blocking. And I know you say it slows it down, but um I'd like to have more conversation about what kinds of ads come through and what we can do about ad blocking because I do have some concerns about just the commercialization that goes on that we kind of have accepted as everyday life, and I don't know that we need to accept all those ads as part of just using the internet.
I'd be happy to have a study session. We can dive deeper into that particular topic. Just to make sure everybody knows, the Google environment, right, when you're in Docs, when you're in Google Search, none of that has ads. Those are all ad-free by definition. It's when you go to like CNN and ads are popping up that we can't stop at this point, or we don't stop.
Yeah, what I had explained to you is I was in a classroom and they had the weather side up and it had ads all along the side. Um, and so I would just like to at some point have a conversation about the commercialization piece of this. And I don't think it, like I say, maybe agenda setting is a better place to bring it up, but it also kind of fits here.
Yeah, did, was it decided to not, or to block social media at middle school, or not?
It was decided not to block it. And part of that um is under the understanding that kids are on social media and we wanna create learning opportunities to do that. So it was a lengthy discussion with the principals, um and the middle school principals, um at the end of it, decided that social media is okay to be on. Gaming, they decided they wanted it to be off. So that's a fundamental change next year that is not happening this year.
Well, I have a real concern with that, being that most middle school students are under the age required to have a social media account. And I'm not saying they don't go around that because I'm sure they do, but I have a problem with the school district enabling them to do something they're not supposed to be doing.
Yeah, so um it, it's a wonderful question, and I mean, we will do whatever you would like us to do. Um, certainly your eighth graders, meet the thirteen-year-old um age restriction that's typically on social media. Um, we're trying to teach in the reality of the world, which may not equate to what all the policies of the world are.
I believe that I did send you all the summary of the principal work. Okay, good. I got a little nervous there for a minute. Go back and look up some of the things they said. I think they, they really have given good direction. And, and Andrew listened very carefully, so I just wanna make sure. Thanks.
I appreciate Kitty's comment and agree totally with tha- that um thought. But uh, this is often another question about, or, or it's just an FYI on the survey that gets presented to parents. I would just caution that it just doesn't get too lengthy because then a lot of people just don't answer it, and we've got so much here to cover. Somehow we have to make it concise enough and to the point and so that our data is reliable and people don't just skip through.
I worry about that, too.
Um, and following up on the social media piece, so assuming that we're not using our cell phones for social media, they'd be using, the kids would be using Chromebooks?
Chromebooks, exactly.
So could we then track how much time is being spent on social media sites?
Probably not time, but we could probably track how many attempts to go to a social media site there were. Um, I, I don't think, we mentioned it today when I was talking to you, um Tina, um, but I know I talked about it with the others that visited, that our web filter looks at roughly forty million URLs a day. It blocks about three million. So it blocks about six percent of our web traffic. There's a lot of stuff going through there. Now, keep in mind, if you go to, say, a CNN or a weather.com, it's loading a bunch of other things from other sites, and that's why that number accelerates so quickly. Um, but we should be able, and I'll work with our security engineer to see if we can't run a report to say, how often is Facebook or Twitter being visited?
Yeah, I mean, cuz I defer to our principals, but um, you know, as a parent, I'm, I'm not real supportive of social media at that age, but that, but that's obviously, you know, a different conversation. It might have something to do with the parent survey.
Right. I think one thing we need to do is get the phone situation understood. Because if they're using our network and they're going to those sites on their phone, that's one thing. If they're going to those sites on the Chromebook, that's another thing. Um, so.
Right, and, and then it gets into this conversation about the Chromebook should be used for instruction and educational purposes. So I, I'm not sure to what extent social media fits under that umbrella. But anyway, other comments?
Yeah.
Appreciate the, the nuances that some of uh, some of my colleagues have brought up around cellphone use, but I, with a few exceptions, I don't think cell phones or wearable electronics belong in the classroom. And so I would hope, I, I think this policy gives a pretty good direction as written, but I would hope we could find some kind of language that would emphasize that piece. Still wanna do that. And I wanna echo also Kathy's comments about ads and ad blocking. You know, schools are one of the few places that are relatively free of ads for our kids, and we should do everything we can to keep it that way. And where do we go next with this, Tina?
I think we should ask Andrew.
So at listening to you, I think we've got um really two options. One is that we come back at the second meeting in August and you adopt what we've suggested, knowing that we can then do survey results and we can fine-tune, um for example, the cellphone policy. And we don't have to wait another year. We can do that as soon as the survey results are available. The other option is we just wait. And we, we're doing the study session tonight, and we just hold until we get parent survey results, and then we do the adjustments. Um, it would probably be the November, December timeframe that we would come back with this exact policy.
Thoughts?
Just one more question. I'm yet to do my tour with you, and I'm setting it up uh
Excellent.
even as we are looking at each other. I just sent you an email.
Okay.
But on, uh, real quick question, last one for me for tonight on this, ad blocking on um the social media accounts. Do you have that ability?
We do no, we do no ad blocking today, and you can purchase software that, that blocks it at the highest level. I mean, we really need to go into a deeper conversation, but at the highest level, there's two problems. One is that it's blocking ads and taking CPU time to figure out, what do I block, what do I not? And it changes the user experience. That's one. The second one, there are sites now that will block you if you're blocking their ads. So if you, if you go to Forbes dot com and you are running an ad blocker, Forbes stops you from getting to their site. And arguably, Forbes could be an educational site to go to. That's just one of, of thousands.
I appreciate your answer. I, I do, as, as a um, a point that I wanted to make is sometimes I, I get frustrated if I order something on Amazon and it shows up on Facebook.
Yeah, or my problem, it shows up on Facebook, then I click on it and order it, and it's like, oh. Exactly. Somebody's happy then.
Andrew, I think I maybe misunderstood you. You said we would, the second choice is to wait, but then you said you'd bring back this exact same policy. Wouldn't we reflect what we learned in, in a revised policy? So I don't know if I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't clear there. So first option would be that you guys come back, your first meeting in August, you adopt the policy as written. That gets in things like the hotspots, gets us down this path of making things better, even though we all know it's not perfect. And then we do the survey, and then we get the survey results, and we use that to inform us on further tweaks or adjustment to the cellphone policy, for example. That'd be option one. Option two would be that we don't come back in August, so the policy stays as written today. We do the survey in October. We get those results, and then we have another study session with any updates that are informed by this. So all the second option is doing is basically saying, we're just gonna hold with what we had last year until we can get through the survey. The first option takes us a little bit further down the road, knowing that we'll revisit this next year.
I don't think I agree with that characterization because the second option to me says we're really interested in hearing from the community before we go forward with this important policy. And if we don't do that, I mean, I understand we can do it under option one, but I think the way we frame it is really important, which is this is important and we recognize that as a board, we're supposed to reflect what we hear from the community and, and get feedback. And in fact, our policy requires that before we set policy. So I just think the way we frame it is really important.
I agree. I'm gonna go back to the first slide because I don't want anybody to think that I just sat in my office and made this up. This has been a lengthy process on input. And I'll go back to this slide where we have had discussions with our teacher tech contacts, we've had discussions with our principals, we've had discussions with cabinet, we've had discussions with DTAC, which includes parents. Um, the recommendations in here are not so much controversial with the exception of the hotspots possibly, but I think we'll be okay there, and the phone policy. I think those are the two, but even this language doesn't change what is in, already there. So it at least allows us to get the hotspot situation under control, or at least start to get it under control.
So um I'm going to do a process piece cuz we probably could go on with this for another hour. And I don't know that we would get to a good place, so I just wanna do a process check. Tonight, these policies are here for study. So what you're doing is you're adopting them for study so that then, when we have data and when we come back, we can revise them in the fall. But you do need to accept them for study. And what I can't remember, Laura, do we need to vote? No, Laura says you don't have to vote. But I'm not sure that unless there are any other really critical questions, there's any reason we can't adopt these for study. What that means, what that means is we bring revisions back to you in the fall.
Well, and I, I think that maybe we wanna give some direction now in terms of, do we want to adopt or look at these before, after the parent survey, knowing that we might change them twice next year versus one time? Right? So that's, I think, those are the options on the table. So why don't we just go around? Sam, we'll start with you.
You know, I would be comfortable moving ahead uh with most of this uh and doing a survey concurrent with, with that, which means we might have to alter them again during the school year.
Donna?
I definitely wanna get more input, but I know, but I think there's been a lot of input already, and so I'd be comfortable putting something in place and then discussing additional inputs.
Let's go with Richard now.
This is Richard. I, I, I think I too would be comfortable with that. I, I just don't want us to adopt a policy without at least listening and getting some feedback from my parents.
So Richard, are you comfortable with, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Are you, are you comfortable with this policy and then revising it again after the survey?
Can you say that again?
Are you comfortable with the changes that Andrew proposed this evening and then having a survey? So we'd be essentially looking at the policy twice next year?
I, I think I would be comfortable with that, yeah. As, as long as we know that we're gonna do that survey and whatever comes out, that, that will guide us to tweaking uh the policy.
Okay, um Donna?
I'm a bit uncomfortable with going through this twice. I would like to see, uh, we had talked about, maybe it was before break, by um the August seventh meeting, coming forward with something that we're more in agreement on, but I don't see how we'll have a chance to have a study session before then uh to come up with a final. I, 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 but I want the parent feedback other than the anecdotal uh instances we heard. I would like to see an official survey. So I'm kind of on the fence here.
So you, it sounds like you'd like to wait for the survey to be completed before we do anything else. Is that correct?
Yes, but I don't wanna deal with this two times in a row. I, he said October. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the survey would go out in October, but we wouldn't have results back and be able to compile them for a board meeting until the end of the year.
So it seems a long time to wait, and, and I wanted to see something in place before school started.
So the idea in this would be, one option is to, to take the hotspots and the cellphone and get that in place and then do the survey.
By August seven.
Yes, that would be, no, it'd be August fourteenth.
Or by August fourteen.
Yes. Yeah, and, and I know you want the parent input, but just know DTAC is largely parents. There's teachers there and students there as well, but it's largely parents. So we have gotten their input on this.
So do you wanna think for a minute and I'll keep going around?
Would we, would we come back with additional redlines on this or, or additional input on this? Is that, no, it would just be, we would approve what we're seeing tonight?
Well, it might be, I mean, so for instance, if we go with that, I might suggest that there's a little bit of language about the location of the cellphone. So what Sam brought up, so I'm.
Okay, cuz we've talked about a lot of additions in the language.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm assuming it will not look exactly the same as what we're seeing tonight.
I, I'm not gonna assume that yet.
Okay, well, tha- that's what, where I need to go with my decision. It, it, she was saying that she would like to see some language strength, and so it wouldn't be the same as what we're looking at.
Can you tell me procedurally how that works?
No, I don't have, so that would be more, it could be an option, and it could be that we don't go with it. I don't think we're there yet.
I agree. I don't think we have something that we've all agreed on that we could bring as an action item on the fourteenth.
Well, so, so what, so why don't we just keep going around?
Okay, so I'm all right looking at it twice as long as we're really clear on the message, that this is um not, this is an opening position. Because I really feel like there's a fear that we're gonna say, this is what we're doing, and people won't respond because they're gonna say we already have a policy in place. So I, to me, it feels like we're not being as genuine as we might be in trying to get feedback on this, but I also understand it's an old policy. But I don't know, Tina, I don't know how we're just voting on parts of this. I'm really unclear what we would bring back for action on the fourteenth. But I'll go with whatever the board wants to do.
I think it would be more of an amendment. So I don't even know what it would look like. This is a different situation. So I would imagine it would be through an amendment or something like that, as we do with any policy. Kitty?
Yeah, I agree with Sam. I'd be in, um, fine with adopting something sooner rather than later because if it's gonna really take till the end of the year to compile parent feedback, that's a long time to wait to implement a policy. And I'm gonna bet that most parents are not paying attention to when we adopt policy and that they're not gonna base their decision web, uh, to respond to a survey based on that. Um, so I would like to see us adopt something now, or not now, today, and then get parent feedback and then amend it.
So, so we have redline versions here tonight. Do you want to adopt the current redline versions? With, Andrew has committed to doing the survey, so the redline versions would carry us through until we have the additional data, which you're right, by the time we have the additional parent data and redo the policies again, you really are looking towards the end of the year. But Andrew has created the redline versions for tonight so that we can have, we, we need policies to carry us through until we do the complete revision with the parent data.
So we wouldn't be adopting the policy tonight. We would adopt the policy in August.
You would adopt it for study tonight. Thank you, Richard.
We would adopt the policy in August, and in the meantime, board members would have ample time to provide input into some of the redline versions.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the, with the moving ahead and looking at adopting policies. With uh, moving ahead and looking at adopting policies in August with the opportunity. That board members would be able to have additional input. Into the red line versions. With the notion that we will do a uh, a parent survey and uh. Uh, have a more comprehensive policy by the end of the year.
Cindy, do I, do I understand this correctly? We're adopting it for study on. The August fourteenth meeting.
Well, if we, if we adopt them for study tonight, we could bring policies back to you in August. If you don't want to adopt them for study, if you want to wait and get new policies to adopt for study. You can adopt these for study. And we can do the revisions and bring the revisions back to you.
I think, I think the way that this would work is if you said, okay, we'll move forward with what I've brought forward tonight. On the fourteenth, you would vote on this language we provided. I would include in this language, anything else that the majority of you decide tonight you want in here, if there is anything else. Right now, I don't have any clear direction on changing anything.
Right. Thank you, Andrew. That, that clarifies a bit for me because I was thinking that Cindy was saying adopt for study. And then you're saying, no, it would go on an action item on August.
Two-step process where tonight is the study.
Right.
Adoption is August fourteenth.
Okay.
What essentially you're saying is is that we can study and revise the policies and bring them back to you for approval.
On the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
What? Yes.
And then if there were any other changes that the majority of you wanted to make, then I would absolutely take those back and include them for the fourteenth.
Well, I mean, it's so, well, at this point, we are, that would have to be an amendment made on the fourteenth. Um, board members can get feedback about amendments from and and get um, feedback from staff and from Melissa. Uh, but it would not be appropriate to have that conversation over email. So it would not be appropriate to say, I think I like paragraph two and I want to change these five words to do that over email. So that's the only piece about this that I want to caution us all that. Uh, we won't be writing this as a group, you know, virtually for the next ninety days.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask another question. What would it hurt? If we didn't adopt anything until December?
Yeah, so from my perspective, nothing would change from where we are at today. But it also means that we wouldn't have like the hotspot ban in place. And I think that's one small thing that gets us down the path of where we want to go.
Can you do that in practice, not in policy?
It's really hard to. There's so many moving parts that um, you know, getting things solidified through policy really helps what my team and I are trying to do.
Just at this point, I'm a little uncomfortable with how this is progressing because I think that. I'm a little more clear on what we need to do tonight to make something happen on the fourteenth. But I still think there's so many questions and so many areas that haven't been addressed. And I don't see us coming back and amending it before school or or even before December on gaming and chatting and um, uh, social media, so.
Those are, those are deep conversations that I think you as a board through a study session have to really get. Agreement on. Um, right now, I've got direction from the principals on what to do with the web filters and we're gonna increase the filtering for gaming. Based upon principal feedback. If you want to override them, do something different. Then that's okay too, but somewhere you guys have to figure out what you want me to do.
Right, so and I think that's, I mean, so one of the, so essentially you're not proposing that the gaming piece be in policy.
No.
So it's a practice. And so I'm, right, and so I'm okay with that not being in policy, so I think that's partly what I'm saying. It doesn't mean though. I do, I agree with you. This is going to be a policy that continues to evolve.
Yes.
There's no question. And so I don't, I, I think that we may not get it exactly right this time, but we need to keep moving down the path. Um, so I'm, you know, it's, it's an uncomfortable place to be to know that there's gonna be ambiguity. Um, if you, if you guys really need the hotspots. Or the, if the team needs the hotspots, I think that's something I could adopt in August, knowing that we do the parent survey and then look at some of these other pieces.
I thi- I think Tina, your point is really well taken and the thing I would remind you is that we consulted with the principals. And I think they've given us really good direction around practice. They don't advise on policy, but they advise on practice. And things like gaming is a practice. And they said, you know, we shouldn't have it at the middle level, so Andrew is changing that. So we get a lot of advice and consultation from the principals of the schools and I feel really positive. And I can send that to you again tomorrow, so you can look at it again after having this dialogue tonight.
So remind me again, the principals at middle school on the Facebook, social media access?
So is leave it open, block gaming. Right now, they're both open at the middle schools. And so the new direction is block the gaming um, piece of it.
They, they did say leave social media open. They feel like there's a lot that goes on and they said they have kids who use social media to contact kids out of the country. So they're really enriching their own culture by contacting kids who don't live in America. I, I had never heard that before, but I went, oh, yeah, that makes sense. And so yes, do the, do they need to monitor it? Of course they do and they know that. But they were pretty clear, don't turn off social media, but do turn off gaming.
Yeah, I know you just reminded me about another thing. You approved tonight in the budget, I believe, um, the funding for classroom management software. I believe over the next couple of years, as that's fully implemented, that will give more tools to our teachers to be successful with this whole conversation. Everything from filtering to, you know, inappropriate behavior to. So that's a big step.
So um, board members, let's go around and I'd just like to hear from you. What more time do you need to talk about this policy? So. Um, because we talked about another study session. We've just had a, a pretty good and lengthy conversation about this. Um, so let me know, um, and whether this conversation could happen before the survey to parents. I think that's the other piece of this is what can we accomplish without that data? That's what I'm curious. So Sam, can I start with you again?
And I, I guess this all has to be rolled into a blanket policy. Uh, which is in one way unfortunate because I think we could get very specific around hotspots. I think we could potentially get there around cellphones. And then have longer discussions about some of these other things, but. If it's, um, the recommendation is to put it into one overarching policy. Um, I think, you know, I would be okay with coming back um, before the end of June. Having an additional work session type discussion. Uh, to see if there were uh, language modifications that a majority of us could agree on. And then I, I would be willing to vote on something, as I said earlier, on the fourteenth. Knowing that we're gonna continue to get community input through the fall and possibly adjust that uh, mid-year. Does that make sense?
Just so everybody knows, I will be out the second two weeks of June.
Oh.
Well, what I was gonna say is I really like Sam's idea. And, and I think that study session and changes and. Little. Changes even that you suggested Tina about strengthening some of the language around cellphones. I, I like that idea. But I think it's too quick to just say, let's move it forward, put it on the agenda for the fourteenth.
Could we do a study session the first week of August? Because that might even be better because it could be timely prior to the fourteenth rather than having a.
August eighth?
Well, we don't need to decide the date, but um, Andrew's absence is going to be an issue, I think.
Yep.
And let me hear what, what time you, you need, Kathy. Do we need a study session before the fourteenth or where are you now?
I'm not sure what else we'd learn from a study session, other than rehashing all the conversations we just had now. I think we need more information. Um. I know we're, so I, I went back to your slide, Andrew, and, and I know we have what the principal said, but have you, have we seen what the teacher said and what BVEA says?
Yes.
I mean, I hate.
It's been to both of them, so teacher tech contacts.
But have you sent it to us so that we know? And I just missed it?
We had no, um, no, no feedback to change what we had proposed.
Um, because. I mean, I know, I always chafe at people talking about individual experiences, but my daughter's a high school English teacher up in a big district outside of Seattle. And they tried this and they gave up. Trying, because they said the teachers didn't want to be policing the use of the cellphones in the classrooms and they didn't want to confiscate them and the, and administrator, so it became totally unwieldy. So they just threw in the towel. So I don't know, I don't want to throw in the towel, but I also am just curious. What experiences, because we're not the first, we're kind of almost, I would think, towards the end of the line at, at doing this, so. I don't know what a work session would do other than let us rehash all this unless we had an identified set of information that we could bring and chew over again because. That's, that's where I am. Um, and that's where I think the survey and maybe figuring out where the teachers are would be helpful. But just with no new information, I don't know how another work session would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't need another work session either because it seems to me that, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the things that we're discussing are things that are in practice. Not policy. And things like social media and cellphones. So I'm perfectly fine adopting this policy now. And going forward with parental input because it's quite possible that that would just affect practice and not policy. But I think we need to get a policy in place.
Richard, any further thoughts?
My, my thought is that uh, we currently have a policy in place. Uh, this is uh, uh, the redlining uh, policy suggestions that we would be adopting on. August fourteenth and I don't see. Why we have such a big rush to adopt them August fourteenth. I would rather wait till the end of December. And at that, you know, by waiting till the end of December, we'll also have. Uh, ample time to get our new superintendent's input into the policy too, so. So I'm, I'm not sure why we need to rush to try and get this, this done right away. Uh, and I, I, I think we gotta practice this whole notion of let's move slow to move fast.
Andrew, is there a way that you could just adopt, put the hotspots into a regulation?
Um, you know, we might be able to do that, but I want to be clear, there's a lot of other things in here, everything from memory sticks to lock screens to not using. Box and Dropbox. These are things that could damage our district today. And. You know, we can wait until December. Um, I'm a little concerned that, you know, waiting is looking for perfection. We're never gonna find perfection. Tina, you had said that this is evolutionary. I believe that.
I'm fine adopting this on August fourteenth and getting continual feedback. I don't think we need a work session.
And just a clarifying point, I realize I've been talking exclusively about J. And I, G, which refers to personnel, I, I'm. Pretty okay with just going ahead with that and if, and that seems to be maybe the greater exposure.
No, I think, I think they're both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I.
So you brought up a question for me when you talked about Vox and Dropbox. Because we did use them a lot in sped because someone all of a sudden would bring in and say, I'm gonna record a meeting and then I'd go. Right away to Vox so that I had something to also. In, in, in my toolbox to, they couldn't delete portions of the conversation. Anyway. So what's in replace, there, there's lots of questions I have, so to just blanket approve this as written, I still have questions and we can't discuss all this by email.
Yeah, so Google Drive is the solution to that. Google Drive is the equivalent to Box or Dropbox. And, and they have signed the DPA or um, they are part of G Suite for Education, which. Follows all the FERPO rules. And we have access to it. We don't have access to people's private drop. Or Box Dropbox accounts.
So I'm, I'm feeling like we might have four people who are willing to look at this on August fourteenth. And then get the parent survey and then change it again. That's what I'm sensing. Um, is that?
Yes.
Sam, you, you'll look at it on the fourteenth. Donna, and you can maybe get time with Andrew to ask questions because you didn't. Have that opportunity before. I think some of us got, went to the IT center, so it was. And it's always the difficulty when we do things in small groups rather than always together, so. Um, and then, so we can, we can try for this so that we can accomplish the goals that you set out to help your team do what it needs to do and then. Continue to refine it, um, probably in a short time period.
I would appreciate that.
I don't want to just limit us to parent surveys as we go forward either, so I just want to make sure it's. More as we come upon. Further questions. I don't want it to just be parent surveys.
Okay.
But I'm fine with what you propose.
Okay, so is everyone okay with that? And Richard, I know it's not exactly what you said, um. All right. Um, okay, so well, then we, I think we can move forward with that direction. Okay, great. Um, so now agenda setting? Yep, Kathy?
As I said, I just would like to add. Something around the commercialization and ads. Um, as a work session at some point in downstream.
Okay, so we have a, an item on our agenda bucket list that has a lot of things, many of them are practice. Summer policy that relate to technology. And I think Rob knows that that's one of our priorities, so let's, um, Laura, if we can find a way to add that to that. List. Under the technology headline. What other agenda setting items?
It's, it's a question really, uh. I'm not sure when our, um, the results of our most recent prioritization work with Heather are coming back to us to. Uh, decide what we move forward with first as we enter the new school year.
I thought she sent them. Did Laura, did she send them to the whole board?
I thought she did.
I thought she did. I thought I had them. I would say.
I thought I had them included in the board agenda setting executive portion.
I think you.
Last we, or two weeks ago.
I think you might have.
But I would have to research.
Could you resend them to the board just as a standalone email?
I will do that.
Thank you.
And then will you take the, um, the highest priority items to agenda setting and then? Figure out a way to move them forward?
Well, maybe we'll do it with, I think Rob is trying to um, have a planning session.
Yeah, okay, great.
So I think what we'll do is put it in that context so that we can look at it in the, you know, with all the other priorities that he has and is that?
Yeah.
And that's another thing, I think, I think that Laura has emailed us that Rob is trying to schedule a planning session as well as a retreat to talk about board norms. And how we function as a board. So if that's, I hope that we can all help find dates and find that time.
On the social emotional learning, we recently received an email from Andrew Romanoff, who runs Mental Health Colorado with the Toolbox for K-12. I'd just like if we could, like you're saying, maybe add a semicolon and see if we could include that if there's some helpful ideas in that for the social emotional learning piece.
Okay, or maybe, and maybe we can just um, hand it off to the staff member first and then see how it comes back to us.
I'd just like to not have it get lost in our emails.
Okay. Donna, did you have? Something?
Hi, Richard, sorry about that.
Did, did we already talk about the memorialization issue and how we're going to address it?
Are they still on the agenda setting?
So the, so that was, that I think um, is part of the priority list with Heather. But I also think it was already covered, to be perfectly frank. I think that there was um. No.
I, I just, I'll look at the priority on the agenda and see how that comes out.
Richard, did you have any items for agenda setting?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see if we can't bring that uh. ELD strategic plan. Uh, for discussion at some point, because I, I. I really don't know anything about it. I'd like to learn more about it.
Okay, so I.
And uh. Pardon?
Yeah, Richard, I, I think it was on the agenda last time, so one thing might be, um, if we, could we forward to the board that presentation again?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have the ELD program update on the May twenty-second meeting.
Right, and is that the same as the strategic plan? And if it's not, could you send both to the board?
Sam has.
We've got that? It's the same thing, so um, so great, if we could just resend it to remind us, refresh.
Okay, I'll send that.
Thanks.
In the morning.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other items? All right, well, I think that concludes our business um, for this year. It sounds like we will not be having another work session. Uh, before September. Is that, is that everyone's understanding before we? Is it before August? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. All right. Well, it's been a great school year and Cindy, I can't thank you enough. And staff, thank you so much. I know it's been a tough, tough year and you guys did such a good job. Everyone did. So, thank you. Happy summer.